All right, welcome everyone tonight. First item on the agenda is we have a presentation from Sam Feeny.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board and remind the board and let the committee know who Sam Feeny is. Sam Feeny is an educational consultant that's worked with us, starting our second year, focusing on professional development, career satisfaction for our teaching staff, administrative staff, and leadership. So it's been a great partnership and we thought it'd be great to give Sam an opportunity to give you an update on what he's worked on thus far and what he hopes to accomplish this coming year. So Sam, I hope you heard that introduction and...
It was just like I wrote it, Dave. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome. Good to see you.
Yeah, you guys as well. I'm excited. I haven't been there. It feels like ages. I'm gonna be up there next week. So definitely invite you two. I'll talk about a couple of things that we'll be running for our new teachers. And so definitely invite any of you who want to just pop in and obviously you can say hi to me, but meet some of these new staff that we have coming in. And Glover'sville, year after year, is able to put together a really great team. It's been fun being a part of that for sure. I'm going to share a brief presentation with you guys just to kind of give you a little bit of the perspective and the scope of what I've been able to work on over the last number of years. And frankly, I'm sorry it's taken so long for us to meet because I've been able to meet the best parts of the school with the team that you guys have there, with the faculty. In particular, it's been really, really great. So I'll just go through this. My goal is to take eight minutes and leave two for questions, but whatever works for you guys. But just really, this focus for us with Echo Education is about leading to student success through teacher success and being able to really invest in the key to student achievement, which is our leaders in the classroom and our leaders district-wide as well. So I met you guys through one, some contract work I was doing with PLC Associates a number of years ago, which has since been sold and kind of transitioned into other areas. And I was just doing social-emotional learning, professional development. And it was good. It was kind of fits and starts, but a lot of it was online. We were still kind of on the back end of COVID. And so finally, after a session with some of the secondary team, I stayed on with Chris Wojewski and just said, hey, you guys are great, but we're not really creating momentum here. Can I just fly out there? Can we get a chance to really just pack this all into a couple of days and get some momentum going? And he was receptive to it and has been a great supporter of the department chairs and the teachers as a whole. And so he said, yeah, sure. So we got to be able to come out there for the first time. And the spring of '22, ran a couple of full-day PDs. And during that time, we actually were able to help the teachers be able to become experts on some of these topics in social-emotional learning. So that really led to their teacher-led workshops, which they ran then the following year. Dave, would it be helpful for me to max my screen or are you guys okay?
Yeah, if you could, that'd be great.
Yeah, great. Oops, sorry everyone. One of the reasons also that, as Danielle may have hinted to me in the chat, why I wanted to come in person, because I am the source of all user error when it comes to electronic displays of this stuff. So anyway, hopefully this works. Anyway, so we kicked off our year in 2022 with the teachers and some of the administrators running our social-emotional learning workshops. And really, one of the things that we're most interested in at Echo is being able to create capacity and ownership of learning for our teachers because that's what we want from our kids. And so those workshops were really it. And in the spring of '23, we rolled out the first-ever Career Factors All Staff Training and Assessment. And I'll talk about Career Factors in a second. That led into really saying, what if we redesigned what we're doing in Glover'sville to have it be kind of an inside-out approach? And so the Career Factors, my publisher came up with this Sam Feeny's Career Factors thing, which is much more egotistical than I want it to be, but anyway, that's what it is. So this is a book I wrote about this kind of inside-out journey to careers because I realized at the end of the day, and you guys know this too, not only does the motivation of a salary or days off or whatever, these kind of external movers, not only does that not stick for very long, but it's also not something that every district is capable to do. And so how do we really make and own career engagement for what it really is? How do we make it stick? And so the Career Factors really seeks to remind people, it's not new, it's research-based, but it's not something people haven't heard before, that your career, in your career motivation in particular, that leads to your classroom engagement with your kids, is individualized, it's intrinsic, and it's self-perpetuating. One thing I kind of think of, it's the only thing I really know about cars, but you've got a battery running and an alternator. And as the battery runs, the alternator runs, fills it back up. And that's what a career match for you, if you're motivated internally, that's what that gives you. And that's what I'm trying, I've been able to work and incorporate into our professional development, Glover'sville, our mentorship and everything else like that. And so we kicked off with that in March of '23. We kicked off with that initiative that's really leading into these next two years. So we look at '23, '24, we did a lot of training for our teacher leaders, our department chairs, our grade-level leaders, and the mentors to be able to say, how can you help people get what each person individually needs out of their career? And being able to use the Career Factors language and the assessments and all of those things, which are all provided to you guys. And then we ran our new teacher orientation, totally redesigned. And I'll say, as far as it pertains to mentorship, and I'm sure you know this, but Amy Van Ostrand is amazing. And so she and I got to work a lot on the mentorship program, the year-long, first-year teacher mentorship program, really looking at, can we increase our levels of retention? So we're just starting to develop that longitudinal data as far as it pertains, not just finding great talent, incorporating some of those motivators into our onboarding and our interview stuff, but can we get them to stick? Right? Again, really, when you're talking to mentors, it's, hey, welcome them to Glover'sville. And then, you know, let's see if we can, by our efforts, increase the longevity of somebody who's coming in to work on our staff. So and then really making a shift, I was able to partner with a consultant, Christina, who is amazing at leadership coaching and really differentiates from what we see a lot in education as administrative coaching or instructional coaching. She really focuses on helping administrators be leaders through and through and applying that to education. So we added her services to our offerings with the Leader in Transition Coaching, which is new for administrators, the Administration Leadership Cohort, which is all of them together, and then the Teacher Leader Cohort. And so what she's brought to the table, which has been invaluable, is just a different model of leadership. Instead of everything's on Dave's and Chris's shoulders, right, which is often how that is, to the Wild West of, hey, you guys do whatever you want, but there's no accountability or actually even awareness of what's happening, to now this idea of interdependent leadership, of being able to help people operate within a team and be interdependent and instead of, almost it's a leveling out of leadership at function. And so part of that was even working on redefining what the department chairs and the teacher leaders do. You know, how should they operate in a way that empowers them and makes them partners in leading all the faculty? So looking ahead, as I said, I'll be there pretty soon. Christina has a training on Monday, actually, and I'll be there Tuesday through Thursday. We've got our new teacher leader, our teacher leader orientation, new teacher and mentorship kickoff. And then throughout the year, we'll be able to do instructional coaching, coaching. I don't know how else to put that. You guys have Courtney coming on as instructional coach. Christine is gonna do an amazing job with helping her be an inside integral part of teacher leadership and student outcome-based practices. And then I'll be working a lot with the administrators even next week on how do we take the next step in being able to lead people from an engagement focus instead of an external or, you know, kind of check these boxes kind of focus. So that's quick and a lot, and Dave knows that's kind of my mode of operation, which is go fast. But I want to give you guys the kind of the big picture and open, see if you have any questions or, Dave, if there's anything that's worth elaborating on that. But I'll say this, that I don't travel out there as often as I do because I love the Albany Airport. I'm just a huge fan of what your leadership team is doing. And so kudos to you guys for being able to assemble that team.
Brevity is a spice to life, Sam. You do a nice job. You know, I'll say this, I think the administrative team, the members that are here, would agree that the leadership coaching that we had, our administrative cohort this past year, it was time well spent. The hour went quickly that we spent with Christine. And, you know, I think the teacher leaders, the people that Sam has worked with over the last few years would say the same thing. I've not found any of these professional development opportunities to be like, ah, I could be taking care of something else. It's, I feel like the people walk out and they feel like they've really got something valuable and the feedback that we receive is indicative of that. So I think Sam's got a great approach. And if you guys have any questions, it's been a good partnership. The MTSS process that we're engaged in, I hope to solidify and standardize a lot of the things that he's helped us put in place as far as building leadership capacity within grade levels and obviously within buildings and across buildings, those transitions from primaries to intermediate, intermediate to middle, middle to high school. Glover'sville's got a lot of challenges and I think, I look at the last few years, implementation of our CKLA program, the building of the mentorship program, the cooperation among leaders, both building level and grade level. If we're moving in the right direction, we appreciate Sam's partnership.
Yeah, and if I could just add real quick, one of the things that we've really, our focus is in scaffolding a school or a district, is to really engage and then build capacity and create ownership, which is what we want to do, what we want our teachers to do with our students, right, to engage them, to build their capacity and create ownership of their learning. And so each time, we try to level up a little bit in what we're not only delivering, but what we're asking of our participants so that they are more and more on the same page, ready to turn around and give out that same thing to those that they come in and contact with.
And the career satisfaction piece can't be overstated. In this marketplace, with less people going into the profession, when there's a job, career satisfaction, it's something that we certainly want to build within our organization because the truth is, many districts are hiring people at steps 20 and above because they're having a hard time finding certified teachers as well. I think we queued in on an important topic at the right time in the last few years. And I'm not saying we're batting a thousand when it comes to making everybody feel really valued, but we do value our people and it's something, it's an ongoing process to help them feel that way.
Yeah, definitely. You're at least not ignoring the thing that you can control. And that's the biggest thing for me at the end of the day is, if they leave and I've done everything I can, hey, you know, good for you. Good luck. But I don't want to have missed something. And I think what we're doing here with layering in, not only the mentor, but now what we're going to be focusing, I'm going to be focusing with the administrators on Thursday, is their non-evaluative conversations with their staff, which is not, hey, why'd you do that? It's, hey, how you doing? And let's keep our fingers on the pulse of how people are doing so we're not surprised when somebody needs to roll.
Any questions for Sam? All right, Sam, well done. We'll see you later this week or early next week.
That's right. Yeah, so anyway, so was it Wednesday? Sorry, Tuesday and Wednesday, we'll be doing the new teacher training from, let's say, 8:30 to 2:30 or so in the room you're sitting in. So if you guys want to swing in and say hi, it'd be great to meet you, but also, as I said, to make that connection with some of those new teachers so they know more about the team that's supporting them. So anyway, great seeing you guys. Have a great night. Please shoot me an email if you need anything. It's just sam@echoeducation.com. If you have any questions about anything that I'm working on or other ways that I can help you guys.
Pretty effective parenting, Sam. You quieted it down.
Well, usually, it's the grandparent approach where I get them all sugared up and then you gotta take care of them because I can leave. But I understand where you're going.
Be well.
All right, see you guys. Bye.
Bye.
All right, next item, we have a presentation for Capital Project Update.
All right, so we'll jump right into the packet in front of you. So as we flip to the first slide, Kingsborough, interior of the building, ductwork is in, everything is above the ceilings. Every classroom in that space looks like the picture you see there. We're just using the rest of this week to make sure we got all our Ts crossed and Is dotted. And then we'll be flooding that with ceiling tile, working with the building team as they clean some classrooms, kind of get on the same page with them and work around and get everything put back together. So that building is in good shape in the interior. You'll see on that roof, we do have a few pieces of duct left to be put up there, so we continue on that probably right up until the last week of summer. And then on the outside of the building, we're adding some additional sidewalk just for ease of access on the parking lot side. And again, that'll be poured the week before school starts. Buttoned up out there. Any questions on Kingsborough?
You say for the ductwork last week of summer, you mean summer recess or summer, summer?
Summer recess, sorry. Yeah, yeah, summer recess before kids go in. That's summer here, right? So we'll be out, like I said, this week, we'll be out of the interior of the building. I'm working on the exterior up on the roof. And we'll be, and all these buildings into September, you know, we'll be behind scenes, behind closed doors, above ceilings, back and forth on second shift. Over at the Boulevard, so those units are all actually set now. The floor is patched, the walls are patched and painted. We'll get those rooms turned over to the district this week. That's four of the rooms on the first floor that are part of the federal funds. So that'll be again to the district by the end of the week to clean up, move back in, get those ready. Up on the second floor, again, another four rooms is part of the federal air conditioning project. Those ductwork is complete, ceilings will be up this week. And then we'll funnel right behind them with ceiling tile back in place and again, working with the district, the building team over there to get those rooms cleaned up and ready to go for school. Any questions at Boulevard?
Just one of the pictures, I noticed that the one unit is ready in the corner. The reason why the other one is kind of offset more in the middle and half the corner?
They're all in the corner right now, nice and tight. That one, we just put in place so we could finish patching the floor and everything. So it'll all look like the one that's nice and tight with the finished panel and all in place.
Thank you.
Some of the rooms have the vertical units, like the one that looks like it's away from the wall. That's because it's a one-story addition and there wasn't room for the ductwork above the ceiling. Where we have the units on the second floor, those are fed from a rooftop unit. Those are ducted above ceilings. So there are two different types of mechanical equipment that we're providing depending on the style of the original construction.
As we keep flipping over to Park Terrace, again with the federal project, this is the whole south side of the building. So all 12 classrooms have ceilings up. And again, similar to Kingsborough, where everything's installed, everything's up there. We're using the remainder of this week to kind of cross ITs, dot our Is so you don't have to go back up there too much during the school year. And then we'll work into the next couple of weeks with the building staff to get those rooms cleaned and waxed and then putting everything back together and be ready for school. The library over there is also getting AC as part of the federal project. That ceiling is up as we sit here today. Lights are back in place, everything's in there. Again, just buttoning up everything we can so we can put that back together and turn it over back to the district. Just a quick one at McNabb, just to add, over the summer, just for some additional safety, we did add a length of chain link fencing just to enclose the playground a little better over there. Over at MECO, we did pour the new front stairs that were in disrepair and the sidewalk and then some new handrails over the last couple of weeks. Up at Transportation was just the oil-water separator. That job is now complete. We keep flipping. At the middle school, so the middle school, this is part of the 2020 Capital Project, the main office and the secure vestibule. So as you can see in the photos, a lot of the casework is in. Flooring is going down as we speak, should be buttoned up in the next couple of days and the remainder of the main office. Nurses' office got some new casework and flooring as well. The storefront on the interior of the building is in place. The exterior storefront will happen this week. And we'll really be buttoning everything up, again, closing things up over the next couple of weeks and getting that building ready to go. Any questions at the middle school? Over at the high school, we got a little bit of work in both the capital and the federal-funded project. So for the capital, we are again finishing up the main office, secure vestibule area. Cabinets and casework is in, floor is in, paint is ongoing. Today should be done tomorrow. We'll get everything buttoned up and back in the wall. Working on the interior vestibule is, the interior side of the vestibule is complete. Tomorrow, we'll remove the exterior and get it reinstalled with a new. We'll work on buttoning up all the transaction windows and things like that. If you look up on the second floor, that is the louver for the new units. These are similar units that we just saw at Boulevard. These are the telephone, we call them telephone booth-style units. So again, because of the existing construction, all of the second-floor rooms at the high school get those units, but again, they'll be tight in the corner and neat and installed there with exposed ductwork, very similar to Boulevard. Those units have been set in place, they're working over the next few days to get the ductwork ran in there. That is all exposed ductwork so it's not going to put a ceiling up after that. So that will go together pretty quickly and be ready to go.
You clarify one thing?
Yep.
Park Terrace, the grid is in, the cot tiles are done in the library, but all the field tiles haven't been installed.
Correct.
So the library isn't complete. It looks great, but it isn't complete?
Yes, a lot of our areas have just the grid up. Like I said, we're waiting to cross IT and dot our Is before we really flood it. So ideally, we don't have to go back in there. There will be spots we have to get back in, like I said, on second shift after school starts. But we want to minimize that as much as possible so we're trying to give ourselves a little time to finish everything up. Any questions at the high school?
Just, are these locker fixes all from the install?
Yes, yes. So they have all been fixed, reset. They took every single locker out of the bay they installed last year. They took everything out, reset them all, level, flush, plumb, fixed all the trim pieces. They look good. We walked in with Dave last week and they really do look a lot better. You should have done it right the first time.
How about upstairs at the middle school? They might, the lockers, they had issues opening.
Oh, yeah. So they were hitting them where some kids didn't know how to be Fonzie and could pop it if you hit the right corner. There was a few that needed to be adjusted with the lock wasn't catching fully. So those have been adjusted and that's...
And that was...
I know they're having a hard time opening when they're closed.
So they got used to that. Now I think they've worked the locks in where it's not, the old style where you have the lever that you could pull up after you put the combo in, you have to twist the lock so you put your three codes in. And then the lock itself is like a door handle you gotta turn. For the beginning of the year, they were tough to open. Now that we've gone through, it's about a little easier. And I haven't heard as many complaints. I don't know if...
No, it's gotten better.
It's gotten better.
Bob, I didn't know, Christina was on vacation last week. Did I get a chance to tell her that the renumbering of those lockers is probably not going to take place until Christmas? We plan accordingly. We just don't think they're going to have the time to execute. You want about four or five, six, seven days?
Yeah, we need some time. So the locker numbers, we want to try to get them to match the hallway numbers a little better. The contractor that did this work, we've dealt with them to do that work for us. So we're going to find a different contractor. And we just don't have the time to get it done this summer just because we are in the end of August here. So we'll find someone else that can do it and do it right.
Very sad, exactly. Where do I?
It's removing the face plates or whatever.
Yeah, just putting a new number. Yeah, they, like I said, they had to come back here for two summers in a row. They lost the shirt on this job, but they did a bad install and we're not going to let them make that up on a change order.
I agree. Bob, I think the one question that gave you a lot of steam is, are the hair dishes all working that were being put in throughout the district if we have a really hot opening to sleep in?
Yeah, just like everything else, like I said, we'll have everything up and running. There are going to be some tweaks and some things and some punch-through standards that we have to verify come September, but yeah, everything's going to be ready to go. Everything, everything will be clean, neat, picked up, ready, look reasonable for students, staff, parents as they come. But we will still be here September, October, just finishing up stuff, second shift, weekends, that kind of stuff.
Last page, Bob, I think it was pretty important to any board education is the fact that we're on track to the end of the project.
Yep.
As we were in last part, I think. Want to talk about that?
So yeah, that was the next item. So we did just want to share the wish list. I know something similar that we used last time. So there are a few items still on what we're calling our wish list that we will get done this summer into the fall. But we really just wanted to look at all the stuff we were able to, between our team, Dave, Chris, and Kathy, a lot of the grayed-out stuff on the back of this paper is wish list items that we were able to include in the project and get done on top of the original scope of work. A lot of it evolved around site safety. So you see a lot of strobes we added, new dialers. So now on the exterior of the building, we have amber strobes. There were some issues where we were in lockdown, either people out in the fields in it here or BEG in it here and they went to the building when they weren't supposed to. So we added exterior strobes even for traveling teachers or something like that. Comes around, they'll see an amber light on the exterior of the building and know that they're in lockdown. So a lot of things like that, small things that we added to help increase the safety and security of the campuses here. A lot of other good things that happened just to clean up buildings. We replaced a lot of additional ceilings. We're replacing all the carpet in the actual offices, in the main offices. So you can run through this list and ask questions now or later if there's anything that pops out. But the key to this is that we still do have, we will be well under budget on this job as we go away. We just don't, so if you look at some of the stuff we're calling potential future scope, we don't have the time or the approval from the state to use that money for some of the other things that the district wants to get done. So the idea of being, working with the financial advisor is their recommendation is to take that money and move it and just transfer it to a new capital project, which would help with, one of the big topics that's on here is some site work at Park Terrace. Getting Husky Field, maybe a little better shape down there. So offsetting that with some of the money saved from this project to offset some of the local sheriffs, that site work that doesn't get the aid building gets, that the building gets, is very helpful for that. It puts the district in a good spot. So we aren't progressing with any of these major scope items in this current capital project, but there are a chunk, a big bucket of savings that can be moved into a future capital project.
What are, is there an estimation on when, we got new signs coming for high school, middle school?
Yes, they just hit port this morning, 6 o'clock.
Oh, so they're in the country, okay.
They're in the country. They're in New York today and they're on their way.
Will they be up by opening day or?
Or Dave's going to have my head?
That's why I was asking.
So I'm doing everything I can to say yes, it will be early September. It will be very early September. Doing everything I can to get before school starts.
Go down, boy. Will they come on later?
Uh, trying.
You know, I speak myself. I think Turner and Pittsburgh have done a great job again for us. And a number of items on that grid, everybody saw that, the wish list items, we just saw across the district, the added, the private, the feldman's scope. We understand that as laws that we're allowed to do. A lot of good stuff there. Even the admin sign, if you look at that little wooden sign across the road that people can't see it, the car parked in front of it. We're going to have a nice new sign on this side so that people will know where the administrative offices are if they're coming here for an interview. There's just small things like that to help make the functionality of these buildings of this campus and all of our campuses better. I'm not that worried. We walked the, all the buildings last week and you look around and you can easily get nervous. And Bob's so calm and cool and collected and I sit in my third rodeo with him and he loaded the litter and had the buildings turned over to our KAG staff so they can get in and do what they need to do so it's a smoother building. This will definitely be a smoother opening heavily than it is in some previous years where wires hanging and lighting hanging. And they are set to come back and see these buildings go back together as much as they can be. And they should like the cooler air when the weather's hot. So the use of the federal money, obviously that was use it or lose it. And it was a tight timeline, so we did what we had to do. And we've not upgraded every classroom to have climate control and everywhere, but I feel like we were smart about it. The board had input and said where you wanted it done and we got it done. So nice job.
Yeah, I'm sure you've heard about the new, potential new laws that are coming out with heating or cooling of spaces. I would say this, Glover'sville is miles ahead of other districts that if that doesn't act, that we have to go by 85 degree or whatever that country requirements are, then if that does come into place, this district is miles ahead of us. Between the middle school, Kingsborough, all the work we've done on this federal project, it's miles ahead of other districts.
What about the upstairs of Park Terrace? Is that...
It's only the south side. So it's first and second floors, south side of Park Terrace and the library. And the main office was already AC, so it's a good portion of that building. Now it's just the field side, what we consider the north side, those both first and second will not be AC.
I know it's really extremely hot days, Vin. Our hope is that with the air conditioning being maximized in those parts of the building, using our industrial fans that we've used when there was no AC, that it's just like your home, you would blow a fan from the cold room into the room that doesn't have AC and it's going to...
We're going to have to go to the basement again?
Nobody had to go to the basement. They could have, they could have come to climate-controlled spaces like the one we're sitting in or the middle school auditorium. So, you know, obviously, we did what we had to do at the end of June. It's not ideal, but it's been something that people have dealt with for generations.
I'm sure you're going to get a lot of questions we picked up, but there was a rhyme and reason to every space that was picked to get AC. So you look at some of them like Boulevard, there's only 40 out here and four upstairs. It was, you know, it was a conscious decision of who was given what. We did something at every building.
And it was always based on sun exposure. So the hot side of the building, that AC, second floors are always hotter than first floors if we couldn't do both. But those were the guiding principles to which spaces got it.
And so as Kingsborough being, the whole building being done is because it was easier as one story and also that's the site that we would use for elementary summer school every year. And the second story at the high school would be, if we're hosting our own summer school, those spaces would be utilized as well.
And there's one science lab.
One science, too, at the high school is also getting AC. That's a reason why they can use it for science lab and so on.
And a lot of people don't, maybe don't realize that the entire middle school already has air conditioning because it's a newer building.
So that's what I said. You have a lot of spaces that are air-conditioned.
So we appreciate those folks who have to deal with the heat in June and September.
Any questions for Bob or Mike or Sidney? Put Sidney on the spot. Nice job.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, guys. Next item is public comment. Anyone here for public comment tonight? Step forward, just speak your name, address.
My name is Chris Quackenbush. I live at 402 North Main Street in Glover'sville. On the 30th of July, I went over to the library trustee meeting. And at that time, I asked them what the possibility would be to put their library vote on the same day as the school vote. And in doing so, I thought that that would make an additional polling place for the school... And in doing so, I thought that that would make an additional polling place for the school district that would have easy access for that side of the city. And also I would like to see if it would be reciprocated up here where to vote for the library, you could also vote at the polling place here. So that would give an additional spot in both because from what I've seen, uh, the, uh, the amount of voters for the city, it, they don't turn out all that well for either, either of the votes. So I just thought maybe this would help the city, uh, just get the vote out, I guess. And also I mentioned to the, uh, the library people that they might give with you because you put out that great flyer, uh, listing about the voting and what you're gonna be voting for. And I said, maybe they should speak to you and see if they can get a little slot in there so they can put out more information. Because, uh, just it, it's not very transparent through the library. It doesn't seem to be. And all of a sudden it's like, ah, everybody's got their hair on fire for the library and sometimes for the school district also. So that was just a, a thought of mine and I bugged my wife about it and she said, well, you need to talk to somebody. So I spoke to the library and now I've spoken to the school district. Just, uh, that is an idea that I've got to kinda get the vote out.
What was their response?
Oh, they haven't yet. Uh, I've been waiting.
Did you present to them?
Oh, yes. Yes, I presented to them basically the same thing that, uh, I thought that, uh, uh, we needed, uh, have the dual polling places.
For reasons that's at the, at the, right at the library to vote?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I was thinking there because also coming up to the high school is not the easiest thing during a school day to vote. Where the library has lots of access around there. And then I thought too that this would give, uh, a chance for more people actually to get into the library and see what it's about. Because they complained how they don't have as many people going there. So if, uh, we've got people, uh, voting for the school and for the library, I thought that would just, uh, be a plus for both. Now, at that same library meeting, they, before I could speak, they announced that the, uh, when they were gonna do their vote, which it doesn't line up with yours, of course. But then I spoke and so they said they would let me know.
Did you, did their budget just recently not pass or did it?
Right, it didn't pass.
It did not, right?
It did not pass.
Nine votes.
Didn't the vote used to coincide?
No, it was gonna separate and always on a different day.
Usually it's always the week before.
Is there a reason for that or just their own?
I don't know if they have a law that they have to follow for their, their, their own entity, so.
But I, I thought they were a school.
Well, they are. The fact that we collect, we collect their taxes, we collect the tax for them. That's all we do.
Ah.
But isn't it if they fail that we have to observe it? That's not the case. So Mike Daniel was lying to us back then. I mean, cause I remember him saying.
Some districts are set up differently. I love the small city school, uh, law, but some, you know, O E S J, there was more of a access between the library and building.
They ended up cutting a lot of programs at the library. They shut down for a few days. In fact, the library's only open to five fifteen now.
So I got another question. We're talking about it with, what do they have to offer that our, the libraries in our schools don't offer?
I honestly don't know. Uh, but I'm, I'm not part of the library system.
Obviously then you have, you have public access or school hours. Our libraries and our schools aren't.
I don't know how many people are going down there then.
When the Education Foundation meets at the library and when we go to meet there, there are people in there. Maybe when it makes sense that we go on the same day since we're collecting their tax, that's really, um, and we have the, this probably discussed with our attorneys how that would even happen.
And that tax is also collected from district taxpayers outside of the city, right?
Correct. It's certainly something we can look into and, and provide some feedback. If, I don't know if Danielle can get your information and you can share some information or at least I can present out at a future board meeting about what we find.
Me personally, I think it makes sense. You know, if someone in Bleecker that's voting on the school tax, you don't have to come all the way down to the library to vote on the library tax.
Yeah, and Kathy has some thoughts, I'm sure. Uh, I mean, it's hard to get poll workers now. We do have two locations, Bleecker and the high school. So if the three, if the two, if we carry the third polling station, which to be honest, I don't know of any district that has three polling stations. So, and that's something that we would have to talk to the Board of Elections and there's a number of, yeah, machines. Yeah, there's a whole lot of hoops. Um, but I think it's something that we can certainly, uh, do a deeper dive on.
And even if the voting isn't done on the same day, the school could still set up a polling station inside the library, I would think.
Yeah, again, I, that, those are things that, uh.
Whether they're together or not, uh, the same polling day.
Who, who, if I keep a man and poll.
Uh, a lot of districts are looking, a lot of, a lot of districts look to move in the opposite direction to stop having multiple locations for, I think it's because there's the number, it's hard to get poll workers. I know that there's a number of districts that have talked about, I've sat, O E S J is one of them. They vote St. Johnsville and they vote the elementary school in Oppenheim. And that district was talking about, I think they still have two polling locations, but they were talking about trying to consolidate to one because of the difficulty of getting election workers. But if that's not an issue here and if it's something that we can do, I think maybe the board, that'd be something the board would decide.
We'll have to look into where, you, you'd have to set up different election districts then. Who's gonna vote there and who's gonna vote here? I mean, it's not, it's not that you can't, that you can't do.
Don't we have the system where they scan you and then if you wanted to vote in both, you couldn't?
But I think usually they, like, you can't, like, the Bleecker people can't vote down here.
I thought they could.
No. But we'll, I can definitely check on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, board discussion. We have the minutes from the July first organizational meeting and the July first regular board meeting. Any comments, questions, concerns on that motion to approve then by Kelly, socking it by Vinnie? All in favor on that? Anyone have anything else for board discussion tonight? Take your way.
I wanted to bring up, uh, the idea again of initiating a, whatever we determine to call it, a distinguished graduate or a, a wall of fame. Uh, I was researching all of the districts in our area and just about every district in our area has some way to recognize individuals who have made outstanding contributions in their particular fields, who graduated from a high school, uh, in the region. We used to have this. We used to have, uh, portraits of those individuals. I understand that we stopped doing the wall of fame, um, because there was a cost, uh, to the district. So I would like us to revisit it. Uh, you know, it's interesting. Some of the graduates of Glover'sville High School have really gone on to do very impressive things. Um, picked up Facebook of all things, but someone that I, I, um, know had been awarded an Emmy because of his work in, uh, videography. Um, as we know, Eric Vitro, uh, recently contributed to a scholarship here at Glover'sville High School. Eric Vitro was, has been coined, uh, the, the, uh, the vocal master of the stars because he did a lot, um, in Hollywood with singers and has made quite a reputation for himself. But there's other areas. There are individuals who have made a reputation in government. There's, uh, individuals who have made a reputation in athletics. We want our scholars to aspire to something in this area. We, we talk about raising, um, a sense of identity graduating from Glover'sville High School. I, I think this is a good way to do it. What, where it belongs, who will do something like this? Uh, I spoke briefly, I think it was to you, Rob, who said maybe this is something that the new educational foundation can take on. Um, I'm not sure that's where it's belong, where it belongs, but I, I do think that this bears some consideration. Um, and I, I'm very interested in seeing this happen. So that's, um, something that I would like us to pursue.
I just suggested the foundation because it would take it away from the district and not be our, the district's responsibility. It would be a group associated with the district and they could do with it whatever as a fundraiser or have a, whatever they decided to do with it.
So the wall of fame was stopped prior to my arrival. Uh, in my understanding, was there something about the comptroller's office that thought the district shouldn't be using? It's not, wasn't just a budgetary line item that we thought was worth cutting. It was something about gifted public funds.
I think so.
So, yeah, it wasn't, I just wanted to be clear that it wasn't because the district didn't value it and, and said, let's get rid of that expenditure because obviously we know it wasn't much money um, for whatever we were doing. Um, but I think it was that, for some reason we got flagged for that. Is there a district that you saw who you thought was, uh, really doing it like exemplar?
I'm sorry?
Was, is there a district that you, you said you?
Uh, you know, Fond of Fultonville has it, Broad Auburn has it, Amsterdam has it, um, Johnstown has it.
Just wondering how they, are they funding it through a foundation or they?
I, I, I don't know.
I'll find out.
And I, and my thoughts were that wherever this, this ends up, those are, you know, this needs to be explored and see the, you know, um, the best practices as to how to go forward. Um, as a former employee of Fulton Montgomery Community College, it was our, uh, foundation that, uh, recognizes distinguished graduates. And it, uh, you know, the foundation puts on a, a dinner and, and as I recall, that's how it used to be done with our wall of fame. That we put on a dinner and the, um, and people come to recognize those individuals and you paid your way. So I'm not sure why we stopped doing it. But I'll be honest, I'm concerned about the fact that there are a number of individuals who were recognized by our, uh, district. And we had portraits up and where those are, um, it, it bothers me.
Okay. Just to be straight, there were some up there that probably shouldn't have been on that wall as well.
There was a committee, Vinnie. So, anyway, this, Rob.
So we, we will certainly, uh, Pete can speak. He was, he was here when that happened, probably?
I was on the Board of Education when we stopped doing that because of the reasons Rob said. It cannot be funded through, uh, public money. You have to set up a separate foundation with a five oh one C three to have that program. Otherwise it's not, technically not legal to spend taxpayers' money for a hall of fame. So that's the reason we did stop years ago.
Okay.
So the foundation would be a good spot.
I'm, I'm on the foundation and so is Osama. Uh, so we will bring this topic up to them. I can't imagine it won't be well received.
It's a great idea.
So.
I guess.
Yeah, and Sharon, may, maybe it's something that you could come to foundation and talk.
Sure, I would love to.
Okay.
You wouldn't get sworn in as a new member.
It's gonna be the, uh, honor grad committee headed up by new member Sharon Pauling. Thanks for that, Pete. Anyone have anything else for board discussion tonight? All right, turn over superintendent's report.
Okay, good evening. Good evening, everybody.
Uh, we only did one?
Did you do both of them organizationally right now?
I thought I did both of them together.
Oh, you did? Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Can I just get that?
Huh?
Can I just get who the emotions were? I was with the.
Kelly.
Kelly.
Hall of Fame, yes.
Yeah, everybody voted, yes. All right, Sharon, you got one more thing, sorry.
One more thing as we're talking about, um, basically, you know, acknowledging people who have done outstanding things. We, we do a lot of marketing and I'm very impressed with the marketing that we do. And I want to give credit to Osama because I am absolutely loving the, uh, the Glover'sville School District Facebook page. I'm one of the top contributors. I guess I get a star or something on, on the page. But we're, we're recognizing, we're recognizing our scholars, we're recognizing our faculty. Um, I, I, I sent a message, I think, to the board, but I would love to see Dave start doing interviews of faculty and students and, and see that as a showcase because we're, you know, we're doing a lot, lot of good things. And, uh, we don't always hear that in the community and those of us who live in the community and have friends in the community, um, you don't always hear the good things that are happening. So kudos for everything that you're doing, Osama, and kudos to the district. And I'm, I'm proud to be a member of this board. So that's my speech for tonight.
All right, thanks, Sharon.
Anything else before we move on?
I'll do one.
All right. All right, now I'll turn over to superintendent's report.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, before I start, I just wanted to give a, uh, recognition to a local company, C G Roxanne Crystal Springs. They donated seventeen pallets of one gallon, uh, water jugs. Um, there's thousands, we have thousands of gallons of water. To the point where we're reaching out to the hospital, reaching out to the city, we've reached out to other municipalities in the region, um, because we have a lot of water. And we will keep thousands of gallons or, well, at least a thousand, but it takes up a lot of room as you can imagine. Uh, we certainly appreciate the, the very generous donation, uh, but we're also trying to share the wealth a little bit. I mean, there is, I don't know if there's a real expiration rate, date on bottled water. If you go on the internet, it'll say two to five years. Don't store it on concrete, things like that. Um, but either way, you know, we, we certainly, last thing we ever want is to see them sitting somewhere and never utilized. So, um, we appreciate their, uh, donation and we'll make sure that it goes to good use.
Just a thought, Dave, is it possible to use some at like athletic events, practices, if we need to?
Yeah, I, I think, right now I don't think we're there, but if it's ever getting to the point where, uh, we think that there's ever gonna be not able to use it for health reasons, whatever, we would, we will, we'll find a way to use it.
Okay.
So it would've come in handy last, uh, June when we were running water everywhere in all the schools. Uh, I also want to, uh, mention on tonight's agenda, there is a appointment, uh, that I'm sure will be polled, not on the consent agenda. It's for one of our very own board members. Mr. Vinnie Salvion, uh, has, uh, decided to join the organization as an employee instead of a director where he's been for the last nine or ten years. Um, obviously if, if approved, big if, uh, this would be Mr. Salvion's last meeting. He would resign effective tomorrow. Um, and if he's hired and approved, uh, he will be appointed to an aid position in the middle school where he will be on the front lines, uh, working with our scholars. He's been in the building as a BOSI's employee for the last few years and by all accounts, uh, has done a great job. I've seen him in action. He's a natural and, uh, happy to see him join the organization. You know, Vinnie's, in my opinion, has been a, a great board member, uh, character to say the least. Appreciate everything he's brought to the table and, uh, we'll see what happens. If you, if you vote him down, it won't break my heart. Cause he's a great board member, but, uh, just wanted to point that out and what the timeline would be if approved.
Thanks for the kind words, Bob.
You got, you got it. Bob, uh, the Glover'sville Educational Foundation, just an update, hopefully to Sharon's point, uh, we kinda launched it. And, uh, we launched it with a bib backpack giveaway at Nathan tour hospital. Uh, we met with Jeff Peck and certainly not just, uh, Stewart's Foundation has been involved, Hanaford. Uh, the, the foundation, which is kind of something that's very new, uh, something that we recognize that this district do not have in place for things such as, uh, being able to pay for things that you can't put in the general fund, such as a wall of fame or some way to honor, uh, recognize outstanding graduates of our community. We have a, a, a nice team in place. If you go on the website, I'll give it a plug. You can access it from our district website, our Facebook page. Um, you know, we have, uh, somebody named Bob Smullen, Sheriff Rich Giardino, I said, uh, Jeff Peck, myself, Chris Wojcicki, Courtney Wood, Alashon Hawkins, Osama, uh, Mustafa and Courtney Wood from the district and, uh, the, uh, director of the library, her name's eluding me at the moment. Uh, she's on it as well as the director of Hanaford. Um, we're always room for more, you know. Uh, if people want to join and they think that they would like to, uh, participate in an organization that is created to help lift, uh, our community beyond the scope of a pre-K twelve population, please join us. Uh, right now we're focusing on birth through, uh, really the school age by trying to help young parents with, uh, access to a. Right now, we're focusing on birth through really the school age by trying to help young parents with access to a text app called Smart by Text. Bright by, excuse me, Bright by Text. And I, I, my kids are all older now, but I participate just to see the, the recommendations and the suggestions and the tips for parenting that come across your phone. It's a real passive way to get tips and I really encourage young parents to do it. We're gonna be sending home the QR code to help parents sign up. The backpacks that Nathan Matur Hospital is providing has a letter in there with the bibs and the QR code is in those backpacks. And very proud of the partnership, proud that we were able to create this not-for-profit in this community. And I think it will be an organization that would probably be willing to take the lead on things that we can't fit under the school district's budget. So, any questions on the foundation? We, we are meeting at the Gloversville Library on the second floor. And I don't know how good of a job we do presenting, putting out our meeting dates. As I said, we're, we're just getting our legs under us. Maybe that's something we can put out if folks wanna join, participate, that we can do a better job of helping people feel welcome to join. All right, this next item, you got, you do have some paperwork on it. You see I have a draft and there's also some literature. Christina, Cody, Dave are here to speak to it if you need. But they came to us within the last month and you might've heard on the news, some other districts, the governor's been talking about banning cellphones in schools, possibly taking governmental action. A number of local school districts, including Amsterdam, has announced that they are going to be using a product called Yonder Pouches. Say that right?
Yep.
Yes, Yonder Pouches. Yonder Pouches are a magnetically sealed device that when kids come to school, their cellphones, earbuds, smartwatches go into these magnetically locked pouches and they carry it on their person. At the end of the day, there's various spots within the school buildings, they can demagnetize, take their phone out and go about their day. This is something that the district is proposing that we purchase with grant money. I think the cost is in this packet. If you look, there's a, it costs approximately fifty-six thousand dollars to purchase enough for our grade six through twelve population. And, you know, as I said, you have a draft letter that I started putting together for parents, some of it, you know, imitation's greatest form of flattery, you know, I took some of the statistics from some of the other districts and also added the number of words and verbiage ourselves that, myself, that I felt, tried to clearly explain why we're doing this. Electronic devices are a huge distraction, a huge disruptive force in our schools. It's plain and simple, I can't say it any clearer than that. Kids are distracted, it causes conflict, it causes suspensions, it causes unnecessary upheaval in the school day. And I certainly understand that, I have children, I have a high school kid who I say, "Put the phone down, stop looking at your phone, you're gonna get bad posture." You know, and he, you know, my son's a good kid, he doesn't get in trouble with his device, but I still am, as a parent, I'm alarmed at how connected he is to that device. In the school environment, there's no place for it anymore. I mean, the fact that kids are being, getting in trouble because they can't put them away. I've witnessed it with my own eyes, the children are, too many children are unable to separate from it. It is a, a, an addiction. I don't know how else to say it, the, the information's there, this isn't a Gloversville issue, this is a worldwide issue, certainly rampant across the United States. That's why these devices exist. You'll see in this letter, thousands of school districts across twenty-one countries are currently using these pouches. Those who have successfully implemented them, eighty-three percent of schools have seen improvement in student engagement, seventy-four percent of schools saw improvement in student behavior, sixty-five percent of schools saw improvement in academic performance. It's no mystery that we are an underperforming district and we would be remiss to sit by and say, "We just hope it gets better." If this is something that we can do that maybe will make some people uncomfortable, but in the long run, it's in their best interest, then it's worth pursuing. Parents and guardians who feel like, "I like having access to my kid, I like to be able to text or call my son or daughter anytime I want." That's not how it was when they were children.
Right.
They had their parents, guardians had to call the school and say, "I need to speak to my son, David." The school would call the classroom, David would come to the office and get on the phone with his parent. And that's the way we're gonna do it. If a child needs to access their phone to get a contact, they can, under supervision, unlock their pouch, access their, power up their phone, get a phone number, get contact if they need to. It's simple as that. And this isn't something, if it's board, if the board approves this measure, we're not opening up for community input to say, "We think it's a good idea, we think it's a bad idea." It's something that we have collectively as administrative team, looked at, spoken to colleagues across the region, looked at the national data and feel like this is a direction we wanna go. So, anything I left out? There'll be specific protocols, middle school and high school might be a little bit different, they're different buildings, sixth through eighth grade, ninth through twelve. But bottom line is, they, those phones will be in those pouches from the time they arrive, the beginning of school day, until that bell rings at the end.
Will, will they be in the student's possession?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, as you take it out of the pouch, it will then work?
Well, you, once you pop, once it's out of the pouch, you power it up and, and it's good to go. The bottom, we're just preventing them from having the ability to.
Sitting after it does.
To access it. Whether it's call, it's mostly, it's texting, it's, it's taking photographs, it just causes problems, you know, I'm sure.
They do provide you additional magnets to use if a child experiences.
It's your win. And there's also, to, if everybody heard Christina's point.
I'll go.
If a child needs to use their cellular phone to check, say, blood sugar, things like that, there's pouches that just are, have a Velcro strip. So, if a kid needs it for medical reasons, things like that, they're, they will have access to it.
So, we'll have, we have to have like man stations when people are leaving the school to unlock their phones?
Yep. Yep, it's something that we can probably move in, keep under lock and key and at the end of the day, have six to eight of them available throughout each building. And, you know, we're not, this is something that has been implemented in numerous districts and by all accounts, it runs pretty smoothly. You know, at this point, some districts send them home with kids, some keep them, we're electing to hold on to them, worried that the kids aren't gonna bring them. And it's, so we are.
The pouch.
The pouch. So, at the end of the day, they would unlock their pouch, leave the pouch here at school and then take their phone and go about their day. Come, come in the next day, get a pouch, back in the pouch, seal it, carry it with them all day so they don't, you know, we're not taking possession of these devices. We're just making it so they're unusable.
Are the pouches numbered?
There's the various ways we can do it at this point, we haven't talked in depth how personalized we will get. If we don't personalize them, they will be, you know, disinfected and taken care of and cleaned and things like that to ensure sanitary protocols are upheld. But that's what the, our initial conversations at this point are what we're thinking that we'd wanna do. If this is something the board approves, we will purchase. We've not purchased these because we wanted the board to have an opportunity to weigh in. You are the deciders of how we spend our money.
Sorry.
Do you have?
Board members.
I need a pouch.
Right, I was just gonna see how you hack into them because I said it was pretty easy. What's that?
Are we staffed, taking the phone calls, essentially we come in from parents looking for their children? It happens all day long, every day.
Right. I'll, I'll turn it over to Christina, I mean, we have two secretaries in both offices, three in the high school.
Three in the high school secretary, one in the guidance department and a nurse who can take the phone calls if they need to. I think we'd see an increase in phone calls right away, but then probably parents would become retrained to not contact the school unless it was an actual emergency. I know I could talk to my own daughter more than I actually have to.
Sure.
Write the quick text, hey, which I should be picked up versus pre-planning. So, we are staffed to take care of the phone calls, but I think over time, it would lessen.
The same way it's been for generations.
Dave, how, how, how are we rolling this out to students?
So, if, this is obviously a lot of, anybody watching this board meeting, I'm guessing it will spread like wildfire if the board approves this. I have letters ready to go to, to families. That would be the first rollout. There'll probably be videos of explaining it. Building level administration will, I'm sure, follow up very quickly with protocols and plans. This is something that we do not, will not have in place the first day of school. So, we're looking at October first, October fifteenth start date. That doesn't mean cellphones are to be out and utilized between, you know, we don't wanna see them. And we've had these protocols in place, the phones should be out of sight. The truth is that they're, they're using them under their desk, they're, they can't not use them. And that's the, the addiction piece that I was speaking to, that we're, we think we're doing them a favor. That they're gonna be able to focus on their academics, they'll socialize. A lot of the biggest benefits that you hear from districts have implemented this, is kids are communicating. They're sitting at tables at lunchtime and conversing instead of buried in their phones. We all, anybody sits in that goes to airports now, who used to go to airports prior to the phone, cellphones, people don't talk to each other anymore in airports. Once upon a time, people chatting up with strangers all the time. We're asking kids to be more social, I think people will be happier. And the biggest thing, it's not going to cause social strife because kids are talking about each other, texting, snapchating, doing all these, using these various platforms to get each other's attention and too often in a negative manner.
At least during the school hours.
At least during the school hours. And as I said in the letter, the state of New York has, has made it clear that districts are responsible to respond to improper social media use, twenty-four seven. I was a building principal, I'm sure our building principals could tell stories of having to respond to things that occurred over the weekend, over Christmas break, over, sometimes over summer break. If it comes into the school and there's a, an impact on the learning environment because kids are upset with each other over something that occurred in social media over the weekend, it's come upon the district to act. The state's made it very clear with the DAS legislation that that is, that's in our purview. So, we're trying to make, trying to protect the learning environment first and foremost. We're trying to do the kids a favor, help socialize them and keep them focused on their academics and hopefully break an unhealthy addiction to technology. Cellphones are great, it's the collective knowledge of the human race at our fingertips. But in the hands of too many minors, when they should be learning about various subject matter and learn how to communicate in person, it's causing upheaval in our society that schools across the country have recognized. It's, here's a surgeon general's warning on the, on the document I gave you. Governor, Governor of New York State is talking about taking action. Mental health, academic behavior, all indications are that this is the right move. Some districts are just trying to ban them, not use the pouches. We feel like this is worth the expenditure at this point, especially it's grant money, it's not coming out of our budget. If this is something that's going to improve our learning environment, help kids stay focused, learn to socialize a little better, improve their mental health, to me, it's a no-brainer.
I think also to Christina's point about reconditioning parents, I think that might be something of a bigger struggle. Because like that example right there, that's a, how do I, what time, what time do I pick you up? You guys for us tonight? Like, so like maybe part of the communication to what Sharon's saying, when you're communicating with parents should be, just, hey, quick reminder, talk to your kids in the morning, this, this and this, think of those things that we all do every day now with our kids that we need to start doing proactively.
I think too, it's gonna be a struggle for our coaches. It's easy for our coaches to send a text, I just said the mic, and you schedule it, you're supposed to have practice at two-twenty. We have to change it now, it's five-thirty. Coaches can send a text and tell the kids when, how are the kids gonna know that? And then parents gonna know, now they have to be here to pick up their kids for school.
Kids have access to their email. They, they all have email addresses, correct? So, coaches might just have to email, get an email list?
The parents will have access to parents' work.
Right.
So, the coach will send a parent's work to the parents.
Start using, parents, parents are gonna have to be more aware, but.
Be very interesting.
I'll speak with Amsterdam, Richard Burdy, obviously is superintendent of Amsterdam, and they notified the community in late July that they were moving in this direction. Andy was talking about the social media, the impact, or, excuse me, the, the feedback from the community, obviously, it's gonna be mixed. There's gonna be a lot of parents and guardians who are like, "Thank you, about time."
Yeah.
And there's some who are gonna be like, "Ah, the district, you know, wanna control everything, you know, blah, blah, blah. My kid's not gonna be using that pouch, my kid will be doing this and that." No, they're not. If they're gonna be here and they're gonna be successful, they're gonna be compliant, or we're gonna have a policy, it's gonna be, we're gonna update our code of conduct and there's gonna be consequences for people who don't follow the rules. We, you know, this is not something that's negotiable.
We need.
As long as the board supports it, this is the move, the direction we wanna move. So, is it full support?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Okay. There's our marching orders, folks. So, we will get this information out to the community. I'm guessing it'll be, it'll, it'll spread pretty quickly as soon as this meeting, is this meeting live? Oh, okay. It'll be out there pretty quick. So, moving right along, please look at your, if you could, the shuttle bus proposal. So, obviously, you know, we took over transportation from BOSI's, the transfer function. And Nicole Costa has done a nice job of creating the shuttle bus schedule. I think I sent this to the board in the email. This would be the most robust offering that we've ever given to the, an in-kind transportation service to the residents of Gloversville. We have attendance issues. You hear various reasons, when we put it out there, why your kid's not coming and you hear all the excuses of, of transportation, don't have this, not letting my kid walk, I'm too cold, whatever the case may be. This will get put out to the community. There's literally six options, three buses, two runs apiece. Throughout the city of Gloversville, we use our, the map that we did that shows where our most chronically absent students are coming from and we made sure there were bus stops in that area. LaShawn Hawkins worked with Nicole on that. I know Chris Wojewski rode around with Nicole and looked at some of the stops, they think that they're all safe. And if we find that some of these stops aren't being used or we can contract down to two buses instead of three, we will. But right now, this is something that we have budgeted for, but I want the board to, to give a blessing because this is, there's no aid on that morning, on those morning buses. That's what, you know, people don't understand, we can't pick door to door up in the city of Gloversville, there's no aid on that. So, this would be a service that the district is willing to spend. Kathy Crunch's numbers, you're looking at approximately thirty-three thousand, four hundred twenty dollar expenditure for those morning shuttle runs for the secondary. And if the board supports it, we will pursue this plan.
Is any other district doing this?
Any, it would be only city districts. Amsterdam has a partnership with CDTA and it's quite a bit more robust than, than what we're able to do with the GTA. Truth is, I, I don't know, I'm guessing, it's, it would only be city districts. I don't know if any, I'm guessing that there's some budgeted district, districts that are budgeting for city transportation. Obviously, your bigger cities have public transportation that is robust. This is something that we have done with the elementary shuttles, we would continue to do. But I think it's important to also put the cards all face up and make sure that we're asking you to support something that is something, there's not, we're not getting aid on, on it. Obviously, transportation is about ninety percent aidable in our district. These buses are used for other runs, so there is aid. That's why you're like, well, that seems like it's not very much money, thirty-three thousand to offer this. That's because those drivers, those buses, the miles are getting aid on what they're doing the rest of the day. Correct, Ken? Yeah. Some of those buses are going on to BOSI's runs, doing afternoon runs. This would not be an afternoon service. A lot of scholars are in extracurricular activities, a lot of kids are more comfortable walking in the afternoon. Some people are able to get rides, stay after, or, or walk. Some kids go to the loft, whatever the case may be. And there is still city transportation for those who, that the district pays the city free ridership for kids, sixth through twelfth grade, who want to get a ride through the city. So, I think we're, we're, we're going, we're going above and beyond. This board has gone above and beyond and we're just asking to continue supporting that and at a reasonable cost.
It's a cheap cost for, if we see our attendance go up, that, if it improves attendance, I think it's a no-brainer.
Okay.
I agree. On shuttle six, is that third, that's supposed to be Main Street and Prospect? You're at one oh nine West Fulton, then you're on Spring Street, then it says Kingsborough and Prospect. And then Lincoln Street, so it sounds like it should probably be Main Street.
West Fulton, Spring, Kings and Prospect.
There's already running down Kingsborough.
Yeah, no, I'm guessing that's supposed to be West Main, maybe? Would that be West Main? I'll find out.
North Main?
This is, it should say draft on it. But these, yeah, I'll see, that might just be a typo.
All right, otherwise, I'm fine with it. I mean, that Kingsborough Ave run was always packed.
Yeah.
Easily had ten to fifteen kids standing on the corner every morning for the bus.
Yeah, it's, it's utilized, so now we're just trying to hit those neighborhoods that have been underserved, for lack of a better term, in the past. Because we, now that we have our own transportation. Because we, now that we have our own transportation department, we're able to control it better.
Will we be tracking this, as John said, are we going to see how attendance improves as a result of these new runs that we're doing now?
We, we track attendance all the time anyway. What's gonna cause attendance to improve? Maybe the cellphone yonder pouches will help bring kids to school more often. Hopefully, this will have an impact. Improved instruction, engagement, obviously, community outreach. It's a never-ending fight to, to get children here and to build partnerships with parents and guardians to help their children be successful. We're hoping to build a K-12, you know, second, post-secondary planning curriculum across the region that has career exploration components right from the youngest grade levels, so kids can be inspired at a young age and start realizing what they're learning, what they're doing in school will help translate to a successful, happy, productive life. So hopefully, all those pieces are gonna help us see an improvement in attendance, engagement, success in the classroom, and graduation rates. All right, so it sounds like you support it, appreciate it. Boulevard turnaround room proposal, that is attached as well. We've had a turnaround room in the middle school for a few years now. Boulevard, yeah, I'll say this, you know, I've been in Mr. By's office a lot over the last few years and the, especially last year when he was at Boulevard. He has kids in his office eating lunch, kids. When you, when you're trying to meet with them about something else, parents wanna come in and meet with them. He's also tasked with doing evaluations and meeting with teachers. They came to me with this proposal about taking Anne, Anne Trojan's schedule, condensing it a little bit, putting some of her ensembles together, which she thinks will actually help those, those, those groups when they're practicing to have a few more kids in those, working together, so you maybe put two instrument sessions together instead of have them all separate. Free her up a little bit more in the afternoon to offer turnaround room services for the Boulevard population. It would be something that we would need to negotiate with the union leadership stipend if she gave up her planned periods to do something like this. So before we went down that road, that's something I want the board to give me a thumbs up, a thumbs down on whether you support the idea. I think it's a good idea. Anne has an administrative degree. She, she was pretty successful last year with her therapy dog hitting a lot of classrooms. The kids really seem to enjoy Gabe, and not that, that's, that might be a piece of what she does in the turnaround room, but we don't want kids going to turnaround room to pet Gabe. So it's really just the turnaround room concept, is the kids having a bad moment, and they go down there, and it's not necessarily something that has to be disciplined with the assistant principal. It might be just a ten-minute unwind, collect themselves, get back to class, and get them back to having a successful day. So.
So that turnaround would only be open a few periods a day, it wouldn't be open all day long?
Correct, yeah, because we're not staffing it, we're a full-time person right now. And some districts have moved in that direction. That's not where we're at right now. Down the road, if we're seeing success, it might be something that we come back to in a budget cycle. But for a cost of a stipend that would not amount to a lot of money, I think it could certainly alleviate some of the pressure on the main office right now administratively to better form relationships with the parents of kids who are truly in crisis. Work with those kids instead of, and also work with your teacher leaders. And Dennis, I think, does, one of his strengths is, is working with kids and families who are struggling in school. And if he's able to do that, because some of these kids, it would maybe lesser issues can be turned around in a different environment, I think that's a win-win. So, you know, you know me, I'll be honest with you, if it's, if it doesn't work, I'll tell you. Pursue?
Pursue.
Thank you. So here's another one. This approach about these elementary, these would not be extra money because the elementary PBIS extracurricular coordinator, so our three buildings in the elementary level, obviously, there's a lot of things going on to try to improve culture, to recognize positive behavior of students. There's stipends earmarked in all elementary schools for extracurricular advisorships that go unused every year. The administration came to me saying, can we take some of those hours that are earmarked in every budget for elementary extracurricular advisorships and use some to create a PBIS coordinator in each building? So somebody's actually being compensated to head up that work outside of their contractual obligations in the classroom to ensure that there's activities transpiring in every building that promotes positive culture, positive behavior, building activities. It made sense to me. You can see the rationale and the hours of what they're proposing. You know, some of these people are doing this work now because they're passionate about it. Others, buildings might struggle to really piece it together. If the money's there and it's not being utilized, because advisorships, you know, there's not as many clubs at their primary level, obviously, as in, it would have a secondary level. Parents aren't gonna leave their kids after school, or it's just not that many activities. Maybe they think the kids need to go home and sleep. When my children were in grade, pre-K through second, they came home soon as the school day was over, for the most part. So I think that's probably why some of these advisorships at the elementary level aren't being utilized. I think it's unwillingness of staff to do it, it's just probably lack of interest. So something like this would be planning outside the school day to ensure that our activities at those levels are really fruitful. So similar to the last proposal.
You don't think that I'll have to, we won't have to cut any other, any programs that are going on?
No, that's, that's, that was something that, it would be earmarked, and they're saying that that, Kathy, correct? It goes unused every year.
Okay.
So this is just leveraging existing monies to hopefully improve the experience for our scholars during the school day at those levels. Again, this would need a MOA with the teachers' association. But I'm not gonna go down that road unless the board supports it, just like you. Yes? Mr. Savion, if this is your last meeting, I promise it to be the longest report I ever gave.
It only is.
That's not, that's by design. It's by design. And the last piece I have is our new staff orientation. You heard Sam Feeney speak to it, just the agenda for next week. Like I said, Amy Van Oost does a nice job. Chris is kind of in charge of putting this together. I think we've seen Sam Feeney, Courtney talking about what she's gonna be doing, Special Ed presents, we had Mike Atherton presenting. I saw a meme the other day on Instagram that showed a person, a man, throwing little babies into a pool, and the caption said, "How school administrators treat new teachers." And I thought, well, not in Gloversville. We, we try to really roll out the red carpet, make them feel welcome, try to give them as much information as possible. So you can see, they get a bus tour of the district, they have time to meet with their union presidents, APPR. They get the time in their buildings, you know. Again, this is all part of the work we're doing, Sam, to really help new hires hit the ground. It's not just people new to the profession, people new to our district. Try to welcome them to our Gloversville family and, and help them have a real successful start to their career here. Any questions about the agenda for the new hire orientation? You see, it's for everybody who works with children on day one and specific for teachers on day two. Unless you folks have questions, that concludes my report.
Seventy-two minutes, not bad.
You lie. Bob.
Might have been seventy-one and a half.
All right, I, we're gonna have a great school year. Looking forward to getting our staff and scholars back. Hey, any questions? Sure? Do you wanna hear anything again, Vinny?
No.
All right. Next item, we have recommended actions. We have three items that need to be pulled, to vote on separately. Eleven zero one, fifteen zero eight, sixteen twenty-five. Otherwise, we have six point zero one through sixteen forty. Any questions on any of those? Motion to approve those. Vinny, seconded by Kevin. All in favor of those? All right. First one, eleven point zero one, motion to approve that by Mike, seconded by Kelly. All in favor of that one? One abstention. I'm gonna do the fifteen oh eight last. Next one is sixteen point two five, motion to approve that. Motion by Kelly, seconded, oh, by Sharon, she's got her hand up. All in favor on that one? All right. Motion to approve fifteen point zero eight, do we really wanna see him go?
Can we go on to executive? I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mike, seconded by Ed, all in favor of that? All right. Well, I must say, I'll miss you even though your resignation's not official till tomorrow. We do have your excellent plaque for you, thanking you for your years of service.
I'll say, it's been a pleasure serving with all of you, and we've gone through some chaotic and great times in the nine years that I've been here. And I know, I, I trust that you all continue to keep doing, fighting the fight and doing the great work that we've all done together. And Dave, continue the good work.
Laying the claim a little bit.
I always like to hang this up.
In the garage, yeah. Thank you, sir. Unnecessary, but thank you.
That's the least we could do, at the very least, because we didn't wanna get the controller upset.
As long as Dave paid for it.
Right?
It came out of your bottle, fun double.
We do need execs. Okay. Next, last item, well, next item on the agenda, we do need a motion to go on an executive session to discuss some personnel issues, motion by Vinny, seconded by Mike. All in favor on that? All right, there'll be no action taken afterwards, thank you, everyone.